Good evening and welcome to the October 2nd, 2024 Meeting of the Roseville City Council. I will call the meeting into order. I'll ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll start off with Vice Mayor Bernasconi.
Here.
Councilmember Albert.
Here.
The record reflect that Councilmember Madonza is excused from tonight's meeting. We'll move on with Councilmember Rakuchi.
Here.
And Mayor Haldeshel.
Here.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Charles Kraftka to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Salute, pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charles. I will ask the city clerk to announce the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Roseville City Council meeting. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table to your right or online on our city's website. All comments from the public should be directed to the city council and not to any staff member or the audience. All speakers must speak from the podium as this meeting is being recorded tonight. For items not appearing on the agenda, members of the public may address the city council regarding any item that is not listed on tonight's agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of our city council. Public comment is limited to 25 minutes for the first segment, and each speaker will be provided with three minutes to make their comments. If the time limitation is reached during the first segment, individuals will have a second opportunity at the end of the meeting just prior to council comments to express their comments to the city council. The Brown Act does prohibit the city council from making or discussing, debating, or taking action on items that are not listed on the agenda. Items that appear on the agenda will allow the speakers to have five minutes to express their comments on the item that is actually listed on the agenda and being considered tonight. Time will be monitored, and once the red light begins to blink at the podium, we ask that the speaker please conclude their comments. Lastly, if addressing the city council tonight, please consider stating your name for the record. With that, thank you for your civic participation and welcome to the City of Roseville.
Thank you very much. Okay, as our city clerk announced, we'll start with public comments on items not listed on the agenda. We do have one speaker card from Joy Ramos. Is it Joy or Jay Ramos?
Jay.
Jay, okay.
A resident of Roseville since 2010. I appreciate that these meetings are online and we can watch those on YouTube. I would request that we could open up the comments section on YouTube also because we can't always make it to the meetings, but sometimes it would be nice to have discussions on there. So I would hope you guys would consider that.
Thank you, Jay. Next.
Mayor, councilman. My name is Brian Faircloth. I reside in Roseville and, of course, Placer County. My colleagues and I are volunteers with the United Sovereign Americans, not spokespersons. United Sovereign Americans is a nationwide organization with thousands of active volunteers in over 20 states. Today, we come to you as concerned citizens sharing alarming information about our state's voter roll database. Research of the state's voter roll database done through hundreds of hours of research conducted by highly qualified and credentialed data teams. An analysis of the 2022 election researched by the highly qualified data teams using only official data provided by California election officials indicates serious issues with compliance of federal law. We are here to present to you and to the public the results of the aforementioned analysis showing the votes cast, counted, and certified may not all be valid and accurate under the Constitution and under the law. We are not here to cast any blame or aspersions on any elected official. We do not suggest any candidates in any race have wrongly won or lost their races, nor do we advocate for the overturning or the rerunning of any past elections. Tonight, we will present to you a resolution demanding an end to the inaccuracy and uncertainty plaguing our elections, along with a summary of our findings and the laws that apply. Though you bear no direct responsibility for anything in the electoral process, we come to you as our closest elected representatives for support and action. We're asking that you listen to the resolution and take the necessity for valid election seriously by adding the resolution to your next meeting agenda. Thank you. Our next three speakers will read the resolution in three parts, and our final speaker will conclude the presentation. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rob Davins, and I'm here to read into record the first portion of the USA Resolution. Resolution for a Legally Valid 2024 Election. Whereas it is a recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have free and fair elections. Whereas it is the duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation. Whereas our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld. Number one, the voter rolls must be accurate, National Voter Registration Act 1993. Number two, votes counted must be from eligible voters, U.S. Constitution, 14th Amendment, Section 2. Number three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. Number four, there can be no more than one in 125,000 ballots in error by the voting system. Help America Vote Act 2002. Whereas the analysis of the California 2022 general election has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that appear to violate both federal and state laws, including 5,886,198 ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the California State Voter Roll Database. 2,776,939 votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrations. 123,785 more votes counted than voters who voted. No one knows who cast them. 2,776,849 apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard of system accuracy for a valid federal election. Maximum allowable system errors for the 2022 general election was 90, 9-0. Certification as defined by law is an attestation of accuracy and compliance. The certification of the '22 election appears to have been fraudulent and illegal.
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor. My name is William Traythen. I'm a resident of Roseville. Whereas these findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election. The intent of voters must be known factually. Certification can be lawfully conducted. Whereas the 2022 election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of guaranteed protection and of our natural rights under a government duly and provably chosen by us, the people of the American people, resulting in the incalculable damage to our families, our way of life, and the fabric of these United States. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us in demanding a valid 2024 election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. One, proof of citizenship, identity, and eligibility required to register to vote, not anonymous attestation. Voter rolls certified accurate and available for public review and challenged 30 days before the start of early voting. Voters added after that date must bring proof of citizenship, identity, and address in person to a qualified official at each polling place. Hand-marked secure ballots similar to currency. Where imaging technology is used for tabulation, the security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Security systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. Adjudication must be signed off by party, candidate, and trained citizens witnessed after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images, and cast vote records. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Laura Burns. I'm a resident of Roseville as well. I'm here to read the last into record in this section of the United Sovereign American Resolution. Ballots, regardless of entry source, election operations, and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to final canvas, including audibility and witness transfers with paper records. A national institute of standards and technology, compliant randomized, statistically valid, end-to-end audit with a 95% confidence level of all elections pursuant to the 14th Amendment, Section 2 must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified, insured, and bonded security, forensics, or financial auditors, not personnel from within the election system. Reconciliation will include the vote count, real physical balance, adjudication, cast vote records, ballot count, qualified vote count, custody transfer, and all other paper and electronic election system, including logs. If the total of unique variances is more than 10% of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in that state for the candidates elected, unless the issues can be provably corrected by manual hand recount and a full review of records. Waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance with, from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded. Be it resolved that the Roseville City Council members stand in support with the concerns and remedies presented here. We implore Roseville City Board of Supervisors, California Legislature, federal legislature, law enforcement, federal and state prosecutors, judges, and both California Secretary of State and county registrars of voters to cooperate and fulfill these requests of the people.
Would you hand it to our city attorney, please? Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are you separate and apart, or you're the final final?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Adrian Yule, and I am a resident of Rockland. What you have heard tonight is a powerfully written resolution outlining a massive inaccuracies in our 2022 election from registration through certification. The resolution delineates meaningful remedies that will proactively protect the validity of the 2024 general election for all Americans. Your written copy cites many U.S. Supreme Court precedents and federal and constitutional mandates that support the need for such actions. Large numbers of Californians have questions about the trustworthiness of our elections. Official data show these concerns are valid, and the law says resolving them is essential in securing our liberty. The cost for not fixing the enumerated problems is immeasurable. So we urge you, put this resolution on the agenda for the next city council meeting where you can vote to join us in support for fair, honest, and valid elections. The United Sovereign Americans website showcases our initiatives nationwide and features some extremely informative election videos. We encourage you to visit uniforfreedom.com and learn more about our organization and our goal to restore valid elections throughout our country. That's unitethenumberfourfreedom.com. One more time, unitethenumberfourfreedom.com. Thank you for your time.
Others who have public comment on non-agenda items? Okay, not will go to the consent calendar, and I'll ask the clerk to announce the procedures for the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one motion of the city council. There will be no discussion on consent calendar items unless a member of the city council, staff, or a member of the public pulls a specific item for further discussion. At this time, neither council or staff has made such a request. Is there any member of the public that would like to pull an item from consent for further discussion tonight? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, the city council.
One second, one second. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, honored members of the council, city manager Casey. My name is Trolls Adrian. I'm the executive vice president of the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, and I'm going to be very, very brief. I just want to thank you for your partnership with our organization and.
I think you got to pull the agenda item, and then you can talk, and then you can thank us. Or we could just vote on.
Let's vote.
Okay. Thank you, Trolls. Good to see you.
All right, well, at this point, seeing no one come up, Mr. Mayor, the city council will consider consent calendar items 6.1 through 6.12. May I please have a motion to approve?
Still moved. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshel.
Yes, we have a valued partnership with the Greater Sacramento Economic Council and appreciate that. So yes, that was a yes. I think that was a yes. That was definitely a yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our resolutions, and the first one is item 7.1, retired and new within 180-day wait period exception with our human. We're going to.
Staff table.
Yeah, all right, we have. All right, good evening, not Human Resources Director Stacy Peterson, but Human Resources Manager Macy DeBert.
Push it. No, we're good?
Yeah, you're live.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Macy DeBert. I'm the Human Resources Manager for the city. The California Public Employee Pension Reform Act of 2013 requires a 100-day wait period before a retiree may return to work for a public agency unless the wait period is waived by a resolution by the council. The Environmental Utilities Department has the need to bring back Mr. Brian Buchanan, who retired as the wastewater utilities manager after 29 years of service with the city on May 30, 2024, based on his specialized knowledge and skills needed to be for multiple complex wastewater projects. A couple of those high important projects are, Roseville will be wholesaling recycled water to county developments like Placer 1. Given the pace of development in those areas, the Placer County Board of Supervisors expects to execute an agreement by November or December of 2024. Mr. Buchanan is a key resource to help environmental utilities complete the negotiations and an agreement. The negotiations begin this Friday. The department also needs Mr. Buchanan's expertise in mentoring staff on setting of utility rates and connection fees as the rate study is already underway. And his experience will be beneficial in evaluating the study results with staff. Mr. Buchanan is requested to come back as a principal engineer, and the assignment and pay rate meet the CalPERS requirements. The assignment is limited to 960 hours in a fiscal year, so the cost will not exceed $76,443, which will be absorbed by salary savings and development revenues. Therefore, staff recommends council adopt a resolution approving the 180-day wait period waiver. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Open it up for public comment. Close public comment unless anybody has any further questions. We'll take a motion.
Thank you. At this time, on item 7.1, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 24-336, a resolution for exception to the 180-day wait period, Government Code Section 7522.56 and 21224. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshel.
Yes, thanks for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, we're going to have a public hearing on Infill parcel 198100, Stonehouse Court, Wellspace Health Rezone, and I'm going to open the public hearing, and we'll have staff's presentation. And we have a change sheet that you'll go over with us.
We'll go over. Yeah, good evening, Mayor Haldeshel, members of the city council, Greg Bitter, planning manager with the Development Services Department. I'm here tonight with Derek Ogden, our senior planner, and Scarlett Marr, our associate planner. Scarlett will be giving you the presentation on the Wellspace Rezone. So I'll turn it over to her.
Thanks, Greg. Good evening, councilmembers. The first item for your consideration is the Wellspace Health Rezone project. So the project site is located at the southeast corner of Stonehouse Court and Taylor Road. It's within the city's infill area. The site has a zoning designation of industrial business park and a land use designation of community commercial. So for some background information, in 1983, the site review permit was issued to allow the development of approximately 16,000-square-foot, single-story office building. So the purpose of the office building was to house the Placer County Welfare and Mental Health Departments, which they occupied the building for several years until a church came and occupied the building up until approximately 2023. So currently, the site is vacant. And so before you this evening is a request to rezone the project site, which would allow for medical service business to operate with a conditional use permit. So as I mentioned, the application is to rezone the project site from industrial business park, which is existing zoning designation, to a community commercial with a special area overlay. So at this point, I would like to point out the memorandum that was handed to you earlier this evening. So in the ordinance that was published in the council communication, we did inadvertently left out the reference to the permitted use table for the commercials, community commercial special area overlay. The red line ordinance includes both the rezone map and the permitted use table, and we would like for you to use this table moving forward and for your decision tonight. So the special area overlay takes into account the existing surrounding uses around the project site, and the use is compatible with the proposed use. So we did evaluate the rezoned, and we do find that the findings can be made to allow for the rezone for the project site. Specifically, the zone change will modify the zoning designation to be consistent with the land use designation of community commercial. And the project site is located as well in an area along Taylor Road where a range of commercial uses currently exists. For example, there's a restaurant down the street, a recreational vehicle use down the street, and an automotive use as well. street, and an automotive use as well. So rezoning the project site to community commercial with a special area overlay will allow for medical services which are compatible with the existing surrounding uses and will not infringe on the ability of those uses to operate in the near future. Early notification of the project was posted on the Roseville Coalition of Neighborhoods Association's website, as well as the public hearing, a notice of the public hearing tonight, and published in the press Tribune and distributed to a 300-foot radius and posted on the Arcoona website. To date, no public comments have been received, and consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, an initial study which led to a mitigative negative declaration was prepared for the project. The initial study was also published for a 20-day public review period where no comments were received. So the project was heard by the Planning Commission back in August. At that public hearing, we did not receive any public testimony, and at the conclusion of the presentation, the Planning Commission deliberated the item and unanimously recommended that the city council approve the rezone. In addition to the recommendation, the Planning Commission also adopted the initial study WellSpace and the mitigation monitoring reporting program. They also approved a conditional use permit to allow a medical office building and a design review permit modification to allow exterior site changes as well as building changes. They also approved an administrative permit for a parking reduction for approximately six spaces. So the conditional use permit the Planning Commission approved in August would allow WellSpace to operate within the building, but more specifically, would allow WellSpace to offer specific types of health services to the community. So those types of uses are listed on this screen for your consideration, and they do provide, for example, a medical care to adults, children, as well as young adults. They're also proposing to provide dental services and behavioral services to the community. Something to point out at this time, though, is that all these types of services they're providing are going to be outpatient only, so that means no one stays on site overnight or for more than 24 hours. The Planning Commission also considered and approved the business hours of operation, which they propose to operate from Monday through Friday from 8:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. This is consistent with other businesses in the area and other medical offices within the city as well. For clarification, WellSpace will not operate as a medical respite care facility, nor will they offer room and board on-site or allow or provide any help with medical care coordination for patients transitioning out of hospitals. Additionally, the specific land use table that was handed out to you specifically does not allow for long-term care facilities or skilled nursing facilities at this site. So in conclusion, the Planning Commission found that the project is consistent with the goals, policies, and standards of both the zoning ordinance as well as the general plan, and the required findings of fact can be made. We do recommend that you take the actions as listed on this slide, and again, we do request that you adopt the ordinance with the changes provided to you this evening through the memorandum that you have. Thank you, and this concludes the presentation.
Thanks. Council, have any questions? Yes, Councilman Albert?
As she provided, there's dashes for some of the items. Are those accepted or not accepted? I couldn't quite tell what those were.
They're not permitted.
They're not permitted, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I'll open it up for public comment, and I'd invite the applicant to come forward to start our public comment. You don't have papers to shuffle? You're in a modern technological world, huh?
You know, I'm trying this, we'll see how it'll work out. Tonight would be the night for it to go wrong, though, so we'll see. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Ben Avi with WellSpace Health, I'm joined by my colleague, Charles Kravka with Cunningham Engineering. He'll be answering all of the hard questions, but I did want to come tonight and talk a little bit about our project and about our organization. Thank you for your consideration of our new community health center, which we believe will be of a great benefit to the people of Roseville. WellSpace, originally founded in 1953, is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit community health system dedicated to providing high-quality medical, dental, behavioral health, and supportive services across Sacramento and Placer Counties, including here in the city of Roseville. As an organization and throughout our history, WellSpace has created a system of care based on unmet healthcare needs. When it was originally founded in 1953, it offered child abuse prevention programs and opened the region's first suicide prevention hotline, a service we continue today, operating as Placer County's 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. In the late 1960s, we formed a free clinic with associated substance use disorder treatment services, serving people impacted by increased drug use in the United States and veterans returning from Vietnam. Again, we grew to meet the unmet healthcare need. In 2008, our free clinic became a federally qualified health center and started building a network of community health centers throughout the region. Today, we serve up to 1,400 people per day in more than 30 different health centers. We've been honored to serve the people of Roseville since 2010 and currently operate two health centers in the city: Roseville Community Health Center on the Sutter Campus and Medical Office Building 5, and Sierra Gardens Community Health Center on North Sunrise near Hobby Lobby and Office Depot. Roseville provides primary care and integrated behavioral health services, while Sierra Garden focuses on pediatrics and women's health. Just outside the city limits, we offer two comprehensive health centers in Citrus Heights. Combined, we currently serve more than 10,000 Roseville citizens through more than 40,000 healthcare encounters per year. Unfortunately, many of these residents are traveling long distance to access care, and we've hit a point where we no longer have the capacity to grow in place. Simply put, we need to expand if we're going to meet the unmet healthcare need in Roseville. That's the project before you tonight. As you've heard from your team, we're seeking approval to open a new community health center at 100 Stonehouse Court, just down the street from Catalin Steakhouse on Taylor Road. The facility was most recently used as a church, before that, a county social services office. The location is ideal as it's centrally located, but also offers patients relative privacy away from major shopping centers and residential neighborhoods. Sutter Roseville Hospital is nearby as well, offering a robust continuum of care. The community health center will provide outpatient services up to 40 hours per week, including primary care, women's health, behavioral health, dental care, with a focus on family-oriented outpatient healthcare services. Of note, WellSpace will partner with Sutter Health on an innovative OB-GYN residency program, where doctors from Sutter will rotate through our women's health program, allowing them to learn about the people we serve while bridging the gap for women who deliver babies in their hospital. Of note, WellSpace accounts for one-third of all babies born at Sutter Medical Center Sacramento, so we see this as a burgeoning partnership in Roseville. We anticipate employing 50 healthcare workers, including medical, dental, and behavioral health providers, medical and dental assistants, as well as a host of other support staff. The center is expected to serve up to 150 patients per day. The new center is an exciting expansion of our care, and we're grateful to do it in partnership with the city of Roseville. Thank you for considering our project tonight, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have about WellSpace or Placer Community Health Center. Thank you.
Will we continue on with public comment? Are there any comments or questions? I'm sorry, any questions?
No questions.
No?
No.
Okay, thank you for that history. That's very important, very valuable. Are there other public comments on this adjourned item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back.
And I know the council probably can't answer, so I will just make it to the council, and then the presenter can probably pick it up from there in terms of what it is. But in terms of medical staff, okay, and particularly doctors, can you hear me?
Yeah, remarkably well.
Yeah, and particularly doctors or the medical staff, what certification would they have, and would that be a part of something that Roseville, you're only going to be concerned with the actual brick and mortar of it, or are you going to be concerned this is for you, for them, in terms of the staffing and where their certification comes from and who their patients would be? That's my question.
Yeah, if you would just stay there for a second, and I will take a shot at this, and I'll have our city attorney let me know when I deviate, you know? So this comes before us having gone through the Planning Commission. So our role and responsibility is the land use and the appropriateness, not anything to do with the medical staffing, the licensure or anything like that. We're limited in scope to the land use and just the approval and the appropriateness and whether they meet all the environmental aspects. Did I cover that?
You have answered my question. Thanks, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I'll say, any other public comment? And I'll go slow because somebody popped up when I was just about to end it. Okay, well, we'll close public comment and close the public hearing, and unless the council has any other questions, we'll take a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 8.1, the city council will consider the WellSpace Health Initial Study mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program and reporting program, and adopting the two findings of fact, and introducing for your first reading an ordinance as amended to include Exhibit B, changing the zoning of certain real property located within the city of Roseville. May I please have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshell.
And for the high school students who are here, you'll notice other people making the motion and seconding the motion, because the mayor can neither make the motion nor second a motion. So there's your, there's your fun fact to take back to your class. Next up, item 8.2, Roseville Senior Affordable Housing Project Fee Deferrals, Government Finance, and we have our Economic Development Director, Melissa Aguiano, and our Economic Development Analyst, Gina McCall, and I'll open the public hearing. Thanks for making sure I did that.
Great. Good evening. As you mentioned, I'm Gina McCall in the city's Economic Development Department. Tonight, I'll be presenting on the WB 32 Roseville Senior Affordable Housing Fee Deferral Requests and Government Financing Agreement. The city offers a fee deferral program through the Economic Development Department as an incentive to facilitate new development. In this case, there are three resolutions for your consideration, the first being for the newly adopted extended fee deferral process, which allows certain city-controlled fees to be deferred beyond the building permit occupancy. The second request is for a traditional fee deferral of parks' fees to building permit occupancy, and finally, approval of a government financing agreement and to allow the city manager to execute all associated necessary documents. Located in the Sierra Vista specific plan on Santucci Boulevard, the WB 32 Roseville Senior Housing Project will be a 192-unit affordable housing apartment complex for seniors. The project received planning entitlement approval in January of this year. The building permits have also been submitted and development impact fees assessed. In August of this year, the developer submitted a request to defer certain city-controlled fees. The request for deferral was for the newly adopted extended fee deferral process, which, as mentioned, allows certain city-controlled fees to be deferred beyond building permit occupancy. The WB 32 Roseville Senior Affordable Housing Project qualified for this extended fee deferral option as it is 100% affordable housing project. As outlined in the report, the total eligible fee deferral for this project is approximately $2.2 million. The request is to allow these fees to be deferred for a maximum of one year past issuance of a certificate of occupancy or three years past issuance of the first building permit, whichever is earlier. This is especially helpful for affordable housing projects where funding comes through different sources and at different times throughout the project phasing. The list of fees eligible for deferral has been vetted by the applicant, by the applicable, sorry, by the applicant, but also the applicable city departments, and only those determined to have no impact to the budget have been included. In an effort to cover lost interest resulting from the fee deferral, there is an interest charge of current market rate, which is currently at 5%. As approved earlier tonight, an administrative processing fee of $1,500 will also be charged per building permit to cover staff's time of processing and tracking this request. Then, due to the extended time for payment of fees, the promissory note is signed by the developer to acknowledge their commitment to meeting the obligations for payment of fees and securing a deed of trust. To memorialize the developer's commitment to meet these obligations outlined in the promissory note, a government financing agreement has been prepared. So parks' fees are typically included on the list of fees eligible for deferral. However, it was determined during the review process of the requested extended fee deferral that these fees are needed sooner than later and would not qualify for the extended fee program. A separate action is therefore requested to allow parks' fees equivalent to just over $1 million to be deferred through the standard fee deferral process for multifamily projects. As typical of standard fee deferrals, interest equivalent to the city pooled interest rate plus an administrative fee will also be charged to these deferred fees. And then finally, we're here because Roseville Municipal Code and Government Code Section 53083 requires all fee deferrals over $100,000 to be approved via a public hearing. WB 32 Roseville Senior Housing meets the intent of the fee deferral program and will provide affordable housing, as I mentioned, and assist the city with its state-required regional housing needs allocation. Staff is therefore recommending that the city council adopt the resolutions approving the fee deferrals and the government financing agreement for this project. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Council have any questions? Yes, Councilman Albert?
See, just recently, you just mentioned the pooled interest rate. On the document, page four, it talks about current, interest rate at current market rates. So sorry to throw this on you. Are those different things? Because current market rate seems like it's going to be really high, or maybe pooled isn't so high, so I was wondering if maybe you could explain what's going on there.
Yes, so the interest on the standard fee deferral is at the city's pooled rate, which is an average over a 10-year period, which is why it's lower. On the extended fee deferral, it's a financing agreement, and therefore, we are required to apply market standard average rate. So that rate will be, the rate applied to that fee deferral will be what is at the time the current market rate when they go to pay it.
Thank you, sorry for quizzing you on that.
No, that's my question, too. Any other questions? All right, I'll open it up for public comment. Close public comment, close public hearing, bring it back to the council for action. You want to read a motion?
Sure. On item 8.2, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 24-341, approving a fee deferral for the WB 32 Roseville Senior Affordable Housing Project, and adopting Resolution 24-342, approving park development impact fee deferral for the WB, for WB 32 Roseville Senior Affordable Housing Project, and adopting Resolution Number 24-343, approving a government financing agreement by and between the city of Roseville and Roseville Senior Affordable 2LP, and lastly, authorizing the city manager to execute it and all necessary documents to effectuate its purpose on behalf of the city of Roseville. May I please have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshell.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thanks very much for your report. City Manager, do you have anything to report this evening?
I do, Mayor, thank you. Just a short presentation and report. Before we get into that, we do want to show the what's happening in Roseville, but as you guys know, two of the council's priorities are civic engagement and delivering exceptional services, and this short report hits both of those. And so what I'd like to do before we play is I'd like to congratulate John Walsh and Nathan Hope, who took home two first-place Star Awards from the National Association of Telecommunications. They were also recognized by second place for the rodeo, the electric rodeo we have coming up in March, which will be a very good event. And then I'd also like to recognize Pam Allen, Michelle Monier, Matthew Morris, and Veronica Santos for their first-place award for the gold medal award, which we have high hopes for coming up here in the next couple of months as well. And so, you know, with the engagement comes, communications is hard, and we have some of the best communicators in the business, and so I'd want to take an opportunity to not just brag on the awards, but really thank them for the work that they do and congratulate them on these really cool awards and efforts that they've done. And so... And so, very grateful for them and the work that they do, and without further ado, I'd like to roll the video.
Hi, I'm James Page, an administrative technician with the city of Roseville Finance Department, and this is what's happening in Roseville. E-bikes and e-motocycles are a thrill, but here's what you need to know before you go. Buying a new e-bike? You might be eligible for a rebate from Roseville Electric's e-bike rebate program. Funded by the state of California, Roseville Electric residential customers may apply for e-bike rebates ranging from 100 to 300, or 300 to 600 if your income qualifies. The e-bike must be a Class 1, 2, or 3. Rebate applications are processed on a first-come, first-served basis until the funds are exhausted. Visit the website to learn more about this program. Know the difference between e-bikes and e-motocycles. Any self-propelled, electric-powered device that goes faster than 30 miles per hour is considered a motorcycle and is subject to the California Vehicle Code. Also, only e-motocycles registered with the California Department of Motor Vehicles may be ridden on roads or at off-highway vehicle parks. And remember, no matter what you ride, obey all traffic laws and always wear a helmet. Protect your family and our community at Drug Take Back Day. Join us on October 26th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. and drop off your unused medications and vaping devices. Visit one of the two convenient Roseville drop-off locations at Roseville High School or Sun City, Roseville. Your participation will help prevent drug misuse and protect our environment. Learn more at the address on the screen. Get ready for loads of fun with these fun fall events. For the kids, join us October 18th, right before Friday Flicks at Mahaney Fitness Center, for some safe and festive trick-or-treating at Trunk or Treat. Costumes are encouraged. For adults 18 and older, get ready to laugh at Comedy Night on October 25th at the Roseville Theater. Show starts at 8:00 p.m. Get your tickets today. And get Thanksgiving Day started with a fun run before the parades, kickoffs, and feasting begins. Register for the annual Turkey Trot before October 22nd to get your spot before prices go up. See you at the starting line. For more information about these fun events and so many more, visit the website on the Join the city of Roseville Finance Team. Be part of a growing, innovative department where you can make an impact and advance your career. There are opportunities for everyone, from flexible, part-time positions to full-time careers. Whether you enjoy crunching numbers or even working with technology, we have a position for you. Visit rooseville.ca.us/jobs. And of course, sign up for more Roseville news and events at rooseville.ca.us/Connect.
Thank you.
Very nice. And, you know, you mentioned communication and outreach. I happen to be playing a bocce ball tournament on Saturday. Somebody asked me about the water feature at Harry Crab Park, and I said, "Well, you know, I don't know, but if you go onto my Roseville app..." And another person said, "I was on that, and it really works." They got right back to me. So outreach and communication is terrific, so I had to throw in an advertisement for my Roseville app. Our city attorney?
And I'll throw in an advertisement for the Brown Act and remind you to take public comment.
You mean the second opportunity for public comment? Okay. Yeah, there's that, isn't there? Thank you very much. All right, so there's two things for all our high school students. You learned that the mayor cannot make a motion or second a motion, and you recognize that the city attorney keeps a close eye. So we will have a second opportunity for public comment.
Actually, the mayor can second a motion, just can't take, make the motion.
Well, the mayor learned something tonight, all right? Would have seconded a lot of emotions and kept it... Anyway, we have an opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items. Anyone? Anyone? Extra credit? No? No? Nope? All right, now we're back on track. City attorney, do you have anything else?
I do not.
All right. I'll ask the council members if they want to report on any activities. Councilwoman Akucci, anything?
Just a couple things, Mayor. Went to two meetings. Actually, one was yesterday, Placerville County Water Agency and City of Roseville. We have a quarterly Roseville Water Committee that we meet, and a lot of tries working on planning for future systems in Roseville so that we always have a, the infrastructure is up to par and we can get water at different sites. So we talked about the River Ark, and we talked about Sights Reservoir, which both, we've been talking for a long time, and it takes many years before some of these projects really come to fruition. That was one meeting. Then I had a conference, I went to a conference with Northern California Power Association, which I'm a, Roseville is a member. They have a program with a lot of speakers from, talking about state and federal legislation. And also, we have our regular monthly meetings at that one. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things that were a little bit different than what we usually had. We had, we have a lot of speakers, different speakers, but two of them, one was, her name was Patty Popey, and she's the CEO for Pacific Gas and Electric. And we haven't, had not had her be at one of our conferences, and a lot of changes are happening with PG&E, as well as what's happening with electric utilities as a whole. But she talked to the group about collaboration and partnerships across our lines of maybe being able to do things together, and they're, she's hoping that she can organize her system so that they can do their work a little bit more, a little bit more organized and for their constituents. We also had a young woman by the name of Sunny Westcott, and she's a chief meteorologist, but I want you to get this, she's a chief meteorologist, but she's in cybersecurity and infrastructure security agencies. So this is not, she just doesn't talk about, you know, weather in California or even, you know, in part of Northern California, thing like this. She actually is looking at the weather all over the world and how one area affects the other, and it's, and how, what you could look at in your utility is, and you've seen with the tornadoes and the different storms we've had, but how much can your buildings take, or your roads take, or your dams take, and looking at the bigger picture of how our systems work and what to watch for before something happens. But it was interesting because, you know, what's happening in someplace in Asia and how the plates move and what else is happening was, you don't usually hear this in an electric utility talk, you know? So it's a very, it gave you a different perspective of, you're watching the weather because to see how your buildings are going to last and how your systems are going to last, and just learning more. And also, her comments, too, she's looking at worldwide electricity and how it is in other countries, and she's really was very supportive on being diversified so that maybe coal doesn't work here in California, but it might in another undeveloped country that has their needs, so that we're very different. And having different, having different types of resources is of value. So she's brought a really, I found it very insightful. So both, that was good. The rest of the speakers were good, too, and enjoyed it, but she just caught my eye when you're a meteorologist and you work with cybersecurity, you know? It was good.
All right. Councilman Albert?
Yeah, a few different things. My wife and I got to go to a, the first Roseville Kabaddi Cup, and it was held in Rockland. Hopefully, next year, we can get them over to Roseville, but it was a very interesting sport, and I'd never actually seen it played before. And it's kind of a combo of tag and rugby, tackle football, something. It's pretty aggressive and fun to watch. But it was, it was from the Indian culture and very, very well-attended and very interesting. And I thought it was a nice cultural touch. The council got tours of our new soccer complex. It's in construction right now, and there's 10 fields being built. Right now, they have one field at every single stage, from all the way completed to just dirt, and so it's really interesting to see the process of how they, they make these fields and the different layers for drainage and how cool they are. We went on a really hot day, and it was, the temperature of the surface of the field, the green, was actually not that bad. They have a cork thing in there. It's pretty cool, a very nice design. I'm real impressed with it. It's humongous inside, way bigger than it looks from the street. That was just amazing. The other thing I mentioned is we had kind of a fun, if you live on the west side of town, there was this big missing piece in transportation, and it's called Westbrook Boulevard. It did not connect all the way to Baseline, and it's a, it's a major northwest or north-south thoroughfare. And the council voted a while back to make a deal with JMC and loan them money ahead of time so they could build it a few years ahead of time, and then the community could actually use it, and then they would get paid back as they built the houses around it. And so the community had a cool little parade, just honking and celebrating the opening of that road, and I have heard so many comments about how just convenient it is to drive through it now, and including Uber drivers now know that it's there. So that was a nice touch. And that's all I have. That's all I had to share.
Vice Mayor Bernisconi?
Yes, I just wanted to take an opportunity to acknowledge our, the vice president, executive vice president of the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, Trolls Adrian, and I believe that you were here tonight to speak to an item that is on our consent calendar. Our city belongs to the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. I'm a member on that board. He works hand-in-hand with our economic development team, and tonight, we approved our membership for the fiscal year '24, '25. They are responsible for helping Roseville and the region attract skilled type of employers that we need to have in our region to keep many of our young people employed and their families employed. And I know, I don't know that we can have you say anything because I think we missed that opportunity, but I wanted to acknowledge for you being here because I believe that you were going to thank us for being a part of that team. So that's all that I have this evening. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, I echo that. You took a trip to South Korea recently, right? You took a trip to Germany, which a number of, so to do that marketing and bring back, expand the footprint of international companies in the Sacramento region, so highly valued. Each of us on the council serves on other boards and commissions representing the council and the council's points of view. So I sit on the Placerville County Transportation Planning Agency. We had a meeting since, since our last city council meeting. We also had a meeting, and Councilman Albert and I were at a meeting on an important funding discussion with South Sutter on missing links of, on funding the expansion of Baseline and Riego. A very productive conversation with South Sutter supervisors. Tomorrow, our SECOG, Sacramento Area Council of Governments Transportation Committee will meet. One of the great things that SECOG has done in the last couple of years is not just have their meetings in downtown Sacramento, but beginning in 2023, in April of 2023, they began to go to the six counties, it started with Roseville. We finished that up in September with a trip, a trip to Apple Hill, where I would love to go to Apple Hill that time of the year, all the time. But we also saw something that El Dorado's doing with respect to emergency preparedness and resilience. We also, and ironically, that came before the Placerville County Transportation Planning Agency last week when we met. That's that. This week, past, we have many nonprofits in our city, so this past weekend was the Hot Fun Pink Run benefiting Placerville Breast Cancer, Placerville SPCA. We'll have Barktoberfest coming up on October 5th. You know, I mentioned this before, always like to do it. I need to issue a correction. When I was, when we had the council meeting last time, I said I had supply chain issues with the Lederhosen. They came in the night before I tapped the keg on Friday, October, no, tapped the keg there on September 23rd. Monk Cellar will celebrate their 10th anniversary, October 15th through the 18th. Bacon and Brew this weekend, benefiting Roseville Police Activities League. Stop by Count Coffee with a Cop this morning at ForeScore. Here's the important stuff. We'll recognize the volunteer activities of our boards and commissions next week with our annual Boards and Commissions Dinner on October 8th. That's very important. What else do I have on here? Also important, later, later this month, we will recognize the 50th anniversary of Roseville's Housing Authority. And as I said, in the state of the city, Roseville is over, is overachieving in affordable housing. Been at it for a long time. It's throughout the, throughout the city, and as you heard tonight, it's, gives an opportunity for housing for our younger workforce and our senior citizens who are on fixed incomes. So the last thing I'll say was kind of fun. I came in, went into the office today, and one of my coworkers said, "Hey, my daughter, who's six, said there's an ice cream shop. Her teacher tells her there's an ice cream shop in Roseville that has spiders in it." So we looked it up, and there's an ice cream shop. I'm not going to do, I'm not going to promote anybody's business, but that's how Roseville's brand kind of, you know, goes around. It just, it's organic. So I said, "Well, it's good to know." So anyway, that's enough for this evening. It's been a long day for some of us, and with that, we will be adjourned until October 16th.